In a moment. Hello, Mr. Counselor Myers. I hope you don't mind being in the front. Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay.
Yep.
Sure your mics are on.
Mics taken care of.
Not giving me a turners on yet. Okay, let's go ahead and get started. My apologies guys for us being late today, tonight. Okay, let's go ahead and get our city council meeting started for Monday, June 23rd, 2025. Let's go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Let's do roll call. I don't think we have any counselors on. We have Don though. Hi, Don. So Counselor Ray.
Yes, here.
Counselor Williams.
Here.
Counselor Tuckertson.
Here.
Counselor Myers here. Great. Counselor Lindner, she is away. We will see her next month after she has gotten married. And we wish her the best of luck. Okay, so up next is public items and comments. Can I get a volunteer to read 2.1 before we do comments?
I'll read it.
Great, thank you.
The public comment period is designed to gain input from the public. Public comment is not intended to be a dialogue between council staff and any person making a comment. Any person who raises a question during public comment should rest assured that the city staff is making a note of your question and the council and staff will work together to identify the appropriate city official to follow up with you directly.
Great, thank you. Do we have any public comments this evening? No, no public comments. Going once. Going twice. Okay, three times. We're all right, we're moving on from public comments. I apologize, this chair is really okay. We're gonna go ahead and go to staff reports, updates, and presentations in that section. And Sheriff, we have you up first, sir.
Perfect.
Welcome. Yeah.
All right, and I do see that Deputy Savage is in the room as well, so that's awesome. Perfect. And I was wondering if he was gonna make like a giant man block out And I was wondering if he was gonna make like a giant man block out the sun and I was like, well, he's there. Perfect. Um, all I see is the City of Monroe logo. I don't actually see the the council. I apologize for that. From from my end, I just can't see you. So if you have a question, you might want to just make sure you say who you are. Oh, there you go. Perfect.
Here we are.
All right, there we go. Right on.
Oh, man, I was hyped.
Look at that.
There we go. Okay, now you can see us.
Well, you can see the last month, there there hasn't been a whole lot going on. It's in Monroe proper, but I can tell you in South County, we've been very busy with a lot of stuff going on down that way. So if you have specific questions, I can help you out or if you can grab Brig with him being in the room, he can also let you know what's going on. We've been pretty busy down south.
Any questions? I know we've got the patrol report in the packet. So feel free to take a look at that.
Hi Sheriff Ann Sol, this is Dawn Flora. I did have one quick question, and it may have already been answered in an email, but I'm just trying to give citizens appropriate information when they come in. So there are times when people come in with, you know, a ticket that they received, they say in Monroe. I don't know if it's outside of Monroe or what the the boundaries are for tickets that are written for Monroe versus Benton County, but they get upset sometimes when they come in with a ticket they want to pay and take care of and they have to go up to Corvallis. So what information should I give them or what what boundary is the cutoff for a city limits versus?
If it's written Monroe on on the citation, then you should be able to take that that payment, that form of payment unless it's so there's some boxes across the top. I think it's across, Brig, correct me if I'm wrong, maybe it's gonna cross the bottom, but it'll say Circuit Court, or it'll say Monroe Justice Court, or it'll say a dare. I mean, they could say whatever. And so when that box is checked, that's that's who has to receive the payment.
Yeah.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I guess the clarification I'm wanting is is so at what point is it no longer written for Monroe Municipal Court and rather to Benton County?
Well, if it's not in the city limits of Monroe, then then that's that's when it will.
That's why. Okay, that way I have an answer for them because I don't, I didn't know how that worked with the agreement. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
It has to be in the city limits proper.
Thank you, sir.
You bet.
Hey councillors, I know I've got something on the agenda here. I can't remember and I apologize. One of the councillors asked about a speed study. I think we were gonna ask, that was you? We were gonna ask, I think Deputy Savage about that, I think.
I just was actually emailing with Lieutenant Bottorf about that this morning.
Okay.
A folk, some folks down in the Bell Fountain, along Bell Fountain Road are requesting that as well.
Okay, wow, okay.
Yeah.
So I didn't know what it entailed to do a speed study if I have to sign my firstborn to you or, you know, what I have to do.
Uh, you really don't have to do a whole lot. We can put the radar trailer out and we can get analytics off the radar trailer.
Okay.
If you want to get with Deputy Savic there and do specifics.
Yeah, we certainly can.
Certainly do that. That's easy.
Yeah, cuz quite a while ago, we talked about doing it out there on that little strip of territorial and then I just lost track of what happened with that cuz we tried to do it, but they said that they would actually raise our speed if more than a certain percentage of the people were going faster, which would not benefit us.
Well, and that that could be a thing from ODOT. I I don't know and I don't wanna, I don't wanna jam you guys up by us going out there and doing a study to help you out and it actually hurt you. So maybe we have an offline conversation about that.
Any other questions? If you have a question, you have to come up to the mic here so we can hear you. Chuck, can you turn that mic on for me? Oh, the Wi-Fi password. I don't know what the Wi-Fi password is. I'm sorry. Okay, anyone else that doesn't need the Wi-Fi password? Anything else for the sheriff? I know we have Deputy Savage here. We can, if you have anything for us, Deputy, that you want to share. We should probably, we should probably have you come up to the mic so we can hear it and it gets recorded later.
Greatful to be here. The only thing I can think of is if somebody expresses frustration that they're getting a ticket and maybe they're getting pulled over well outside of city limits and it's written for Monroe. What that usually means is that the violation was observed in within the city.
Okay.
So they can be on, you know, Fifth or Orchard and and a deputy grab a speed and by the time they pull around and pull them over, they're out on Highway ninety nine somewhere. So that's that's the only thing that I can think of, but other than that, yeah.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Okay, I I think, I think we're good for the moment.
Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schultz, we have you up next. Are you ready?
Sure.
Okay. What would you like to share with us this evening with regard to water and wastewater?
Um. Water. We continue to work. We'll have an executive session to talk further about a little bit of water while we talk wastewater, which is the main, both of them are big issues when it comes to how much development can come in with the water issues we have along with the lift station.
Right.
Wastewater issues. On the water side, I know Mark's been working real hard to with the SCADA systems cuz the electronics in the plant are are having issues. I was in Denver for two weeks for the American Waterworks Association, American Society of Civil Engineers Conference while trying to talk multiple cities' operators into issues they were having and try and discuss it from states away. It's really a pain in the butt, but I got back this week and and he's done real good. He'll be going on his vacation start July. And we have some tactics we'll take to make sure things are running good. We also have backups to myself for Chuck Cross, if anything happens there, to make sure stuff keeps going. It's a very difficult week for us with Harrisburg's Fourth of July stuff that they put on.
Right.
We have several, several things on the wastewater side that are due by the end of the summer. They're very discussed a bit about, one is the lagoon outfall inspection, sludge judging in the ponds and the lagoon leak test. So conveniently, same things have to be done in Harrisburg this summer too before September.
Okay.
So we're kind of working on both together. I've already talked to Branch to get them to come and do some of it.
Okay.
My staff will help Mark in doing the outfall inspection and the sludging here so we can get that done and I'll submit those reports to DEQ. The lagoon leak study, which back when we used to do them in-house. I found out last month and why I pulled Branch in on it because we have to have it submitted by the end of August is now it must be stamped by a registered engineer. They can trust us to do all the water stuff, wastewater stuff, but heaven forbid, we can't tell if a lagoon's leaking. So, yeah. So that's pretty much on the wastewater side. We'll be, we'll be working on over the next more or less two months to make sure we get it in and don't give any more reason to DEQ than we've already given them. We also, did you share the letter, the TMDL letter that came out?
I don't think I shared it with council.
From DMAs. So what happened earlier this month, or this month, last month? Now recently, DEQ's been, they're just on a roll with what they're doing. But what they did is the Willamette was always protected under TMDL. That's the total mass daily load, the amount of bacteria, temperature, mercury, other pollutants that can be added to the Willamette and best management practices that DMAs, cities right on the Willamette, were called DMAs, must do and implement to protect the waters of the state. So last month, they went through the whole process and they now have adopted that all tributaries are now involved in that too. So Monroe is now a DMA for the long term. That's Direct Management Agency, which requires more stormwater work to be done. We also have to do a a TMDL, that total mass daily load matrix with best management practices of how how much, how many pollutants can be in the river and how we try to reduce those. Because of other issues in the past, not to spend hours on that. The City of Monroe, while they weren't considered a DMA, they were considered a small special district and the TMDL person yelled and screamed and finally got a matrix done from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-four, which is the five-year matrix. With this new letter coming out calling you a DMA, now a new matrix needs to be done for the next five years, has to be submitted by twenty twenty-six. This is an in-house document. It would be done, all of the the stormwater and TMDL work would be done by your city administrator when they come in. I can't submit all this. Again, kind of like a few other things. We can do water, we can do stormwater, we can protect people's public health, but if we tell them the best way we're gonna do stormwater treatment to keep the river clean, it must be by administrator or a council representative or not the operator. So I can't submit these for you. So these are normally done. We used to do them to the Harrisburg. Michelle now has to do them as part of her job, or at least submit them or have the council or the mayor sign to submit them. There was a big uproar in the state last year for doing that and and so they changed some rules, they backed off on others and we just, you know, whatever. It's 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 their new, it's the hot topic currently is the stormwater, the the DEQ version of it.
Chuck and council, I did actually include a copy of the letter that we received for this. It's towards the end of the packet just before the branch engineering agreement. That way, if you guys want to review that, it does state that council does have to respond to it.
Chuck, I have a question for you. Can we review that matrix, although it's from two thousand and nineteen to two twenty to twenty twenty-four? Is the new matrix a similar format?
I knew somebody that had to ask that.
I don't know what the answer is.
City had a rare or rain person come in.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, Taylor, I think it was. Yes, Taylor.
Yep.
I worked with Taylor.
Mm-hmm.
I supplied our matrix that already been approved by the state and everything that was done and said, this is what you need to focus on. This outline is the way it's been done. And when it finished, it got morphed into this ridiculous thing and all this column is telling the state what the City of Monroe is gonna do and pay for and continue to work on even if it's not required because it couldn't be done the way it was already outlined and show you here. Just do it. We've already got approved. And modified it. So yes, it can be, but this with the new DMA along with the new temperature requirements, which is another thing that just got passed on the Willamette and its tributaries, this will have to be modified. This copy, Dawn has this copy.
Okay.
City Hall has this. We have it. You're welcome.
So we just wanna put actual factual how we're actually gonna manage it in moving forward, not like.
Absolutely. This is a bunch of talking BS to make somebody feel good.
Okay.
But unfortunately, when the council adopted this, they put the city on the hook to do all this crap.
Yeah, that's out of precedent.
Saying, yes, we'll do this, we'll do that. You tell us whatever you want, we'll do it. And it's just, it's a runaway piece of and it needs to be revised. But with this new DMA being assessed, it's very good to actually get it straight now. The former administrator failed to do the annual report for this that was due back in February. They got moved to April. Now it's got moved to the end of this month for a report. However, I'll talk to Dan on that later so he can get something submitted this month cuz like I said, I can't submit it. I'm a little concerned about what has and has not been submitted in the past for several reasons. So we're gonna make, we're gonna make a stab and attempt at it to try to make it make sense, but again, it it you know, there was a failure back when. It's create other issues. There we go. Issues on the water and the wastewater side. Let's throw kind of what it came down to. So but you'll be able to review, like you said, the letters in there. So everybody pretty much in the Willamette Valley is now considered a DMA.
Wow.
Even Junction City.
Really?
I'm not really sure how, but one of their discharge creeps works its way supposedly to the Willamette some way. So they are now a designated management agency for the Willamette and they have to go through this and this is all brand new for them. Yeah, because they haven't had to do this cuz they don't sit right on the river, but now they will with the the new rules that just came in.
I'm kind of expecting the Mackenzie and Sandy Ames are probably being included also.
Mackenzie as, yes, they are. Parts of it have already been done. And they're getting the rest of them put back in right now. That's more or less what they're doing is spreading out now to the tributaries. They got, they got the first part in and got that passed, got EPA to approve it, and now they're moving on with each other section. So and some of it is very good. I'm, you know, we sit on the river also and I'm very big proponent to make sure that we are doing the best for the environment, not only on the wastewater side for not only the environment but public health. And we work really hard on it. Some of these rules, in my opinion, that they've passed are really a moneymaker. So I mean, that's what it looks like it's doing. For instance, I happen to go back the last seven months on DEQ News and just happen to print these out just for all the cities that have been fined since then, you know, for hundreds of thousands of dollars just in the last six to seven months, including this city. And even before that was the biggest one that I didn't print out was Reed's Port was like hundred and seventy-four thousand, but this looks like a cash cow is what they're doing.
Yeah.
So if you don't get these reports in, which previous administration didn't, a fine's coming. I mean, that's pretty much what they told you in even in their new mission statement that they came out with, that we are going to force compliance by monetary means. That's our mission statement. That's telling you, we're just gonna find you if you don't do it. So yeah, so with whom you get in, I'm sure we will stress to the administrator a lot. We gotta get our regulatory work done first, not a street light for building a new home over here. That is all I have and Mark didn't make me aware of anything else that's.
He gave me a couple of things, but I'll mention it later and I've got a public works update section later. So, yeah. So any questions for Chuck?
No, just a big thank you.
The work you've done.
Yeah.
It's really helped. Haven't seen it in the past.
No, yeah, we have not. And Chuck and I will be talking soon.
Thank you, Chuck.
Yeah, thank you. Yep, thank you very much, sir.
I can hang for a little bit.
Okay.
Casey, if I has any questions.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, I guess the one question I had was part of the state SCADA system. Was that some of that update that they had?
Um, some, they were very vague on the updates and what I read, this part of the SCADA system that went bad might have some of that, but with the with the pneumatic valves that they had talked about putting in and other things like that, that's really just, you know, it's a control solenoid. It's not really part of that, you know, to get the SCADA the system to break all that down and in its ladder logic is, yeah. So I don't really think that this issue, this is more of a this is more of a, you know, a subroutine programming.
Okay.
Issue, I think.
So you guys got that Microsoft Windows update issued that?
I don't know what the IT guy did. Like I said, I was.
Actually, we had to, we had to get somebody else from the outside to come in.
Yeah.
To get squared away.
That's all I heard last I heard from Mark there, getting somebody else in. They sent me a text, said, okay, we got it going.
Yep, it's working.
I tried a couple of reboots and resets and it automatically just threw it right back in.
Yeah. So, yeah, it's a, you know, the glitch in the machine, but it's getting close to 20 years old. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, surprise.
How many people have a laptop that's over three?
Right.
Or a cellphone.
Yeah.
That's lasted that long.
Anything else for Chuck? Okay. All right. We'll move on. Thank you, sir.
Take that back. Just a clarifying question for my understanding. So we have an annual report that we're submitting against that matrix, right? And then we have the new requirements because we're a DMA, which are due on November ninth of next year.
Yes.
Okay.
We don't want to wait that long to get it in.
Okay. I know, because they're going to have feedback for us, I'm sure. And we want, it needs to be closed by that date. Is that a correct assessment, understanding?
Yes, and I think that it should probably be in that upper list to redo this matrix probably by the end of this year and get submitted with the new administrator online. Because we still have to file a report come February of two thousand and twenty-six for this calendar.
The annual, okay.
But because this matrix out of date and we haven't supplied the report for last year and what was done before the year before that, I, 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 I'm just, I'm amazed that they haven't come after you for that. Yeah. So I think it needs to be, because this is the new finding hot topic is the storm mark, that this needs to be a priority, just like the water and wastewater. Get this done, get it approved to give the direction that needs to be done with street sweeping, catch basins clean and everything else. And the public education on how to keep that river clean needs to be big. And one of those things they're pushing on it and.
I did think of another question. The water temperature, is that a set or is it based on upstream temperatures and you have to be.
Set by mother nature.
Okay. So if you're upstream temperatures, it's like, let's just say fifty-nine and we're at fifty-nine, we're okay. But if, if we go above a certain variance above that, I assume we're gonna get hit.
There's best management practices, I assume you're talking on storm mark.
Yeah.
There's best management practices that you can do to help reduce the temperature in the water. Covered, covered open ditches with foliage. Eugene has some, it's beautiful. You look down through those, they go in, they've got somebody manicures on. We don't have staff for that. We're never gonna have staff for that. But water sitting in a ditch heats up from the radiant heat faster. So you keep it moving, you keep ditches clear, you keep obstructions out of the way, you get it down to the river. Because to raise or lower the temperature of a large water body takes a geothermal event to try to do that. So the faster we get out of our system to where it needs to go. But make sure that we filter out those toxins and things that are not good for the river or the environment along the way. Is the happy balance in those BMPs are the best management practices.
Because that temperature stuff has been in the state of Oregon since the seventies.
Correct.
For farmers, ranchers.
Yes.
Forestlands.
And then it's been working its way into the cities lately because, and that's one of, that's one of the still issues that continues go on with most DMAs, especially like, say for Harrisburg. Just look at Harrisburg first. Harrisburg has eight inches of fall from one side of the town to the other. It's flat, sits on the river. And then you have all the farmers outside of Harrisburg who water. They also put chemicals, fertilizers on there. That runs into the ditches, which runs into Harrisburg, which runs into the river. Then the state holds Harrisburg accountable for what's now in that was put on these farmers' fields out here. So they've made distinctions in the last few years between point source in town and non-point source outside of town. And then one of the newer proposals coming up will be to test at those entry and exit points to be able to see, but that's going to be higher lab costs to be able do this, that the cities are gonna take on. So, but, yeah, this is, this is a continuing rolling in motion thing. And, and you know, to go back in, in just the history of this a little bit longer, a little bit back more, just so you have the understanding. As this started coming in back in two thousand and fourteen and so the state had to do a water management plan for, you know, simple terms. Lamont Ward Management Plan, a mile of it in front of, near Harrisburg, Harrisburg is a, you know, three oh three D protected part of the Lamont. And so the state came up with a plan, sent it to EPA. That's one of the only documented times I've seen it. The EPA rejected it. The EPA rejected it because it was too stringent. Really? They said, Oregon, you're out of control. Nobody's gonna be able to pull that off. Which was really surprising. Again, in my opinion, Oregon then got a whole bunch of really expensive attorneys who will change the language and said the same damn thing and resubmitted it in the past. So that's what we're working with now is a, one of the most strict stormwater management plans that has ever been approved. Is for Oregon.
Might you say it's probably a cash cow for them?
It's sure looking that way, especially if you look at just some of what I printed off here. I mean, nobody's safe. Pendleton just got hit for twenty-one thousand nine hundred. Reed's port, another twenty-seven hundred. I mean, the list, the ODOT just got fined for thirty-one thousand. Nobody's safe. Wow. DQ, nobody, nobody in the state legislature is gonna say, no, we need to stop the Department of Environmental Quality. Now, they will not have a political career if they try to fight that. So whatever DQ says, Rainier, ten thousand eight hundred. Tiger, ten thousand.
So if we have our downflow, we're downstream of a lot of people behind us. We have to pay for the point source.
That hasn't been decided yet, but most likely. So it's easier to regulate a city than an individual home.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. And with that mercifully, we move on. All right. So next on the agenda here is the city of Monroe report. And it is in the packet this time. I will go ahead and I'll just kind of hit the highlights. So for the first section here, city of Monroe employees, so we are actively filling two open positions with the city and we actually have filled one of them. And that individual will be starting, I think we decided on June thirtieth. Is that correct?
I'm still going to be confirming that with her. I did send an email this afternoon, but that's my understanding, yes.
Okay, perfect. And then we have our second round of the city administrator interviews tomorrow. And we are down to two candidates. So we'll see how that goes. Let's see. And although councillor Linder is not here, she has organized the city administrator interviews. She's done the phone screening. She's organized the interviews and, you know, helped out with the questions and everything. So I'm very, very thankful to her because I, I don't have the time. Water wastewater, I mean Chuck, you've covered a lot of it already and we're always incredibly thankful for all your help. I did work with the city attorney. We have a final draft of the engineering services agreement. So we'll look at that a little later. So stick around for that, sir. And then, and Chuck, you already mentioned Mark Murray is going to be on vacation July first through the eighth. And Chuck Cross will be here and you have your backup plan in case anything goes sideways on us. But I'm trying to be optimistic. Planning Commission, land use planning. So we do have planned later this week on June twenty-sixth, I believe that's Thursday. A joint city council planning commission meeting. We're going to discuss tap fees, planning fees and general land use code and updates as well. So everyone on the council and the planning commission is invited to come. If you're available, Chuck, you're welcome to come. If you're not, that's okay too. We can thrash it out, I'm sure.
I presume they already know about our issues regarding.
Planning Commission? Yes, they are aware. And so that kind of takes me to my next point, which is our, our contract planner, Michael Bidwell, he's been out sick quite a bit. So we're, we're kind of behind on our, our, our projects right now. So I have reached out to his supervisor. His supervisor is on vacation though. So I will catch up with him when he comes back.
And can I make a quick comment?
Of course.
I just want to say that I owe Dawn and Mayor an apology. We were chatting and I said, let's spread some of this to planning commission. Because I felt like Dawn was getting overwhelmed with all the phone calls. And they were not the kind of things that planning commission could answer. And so then it fell back. And so I apologize. I, I was not aware of the questions that were being answered and I had hoped that that would spread some of the stress, but it did not.
No.
Completely understood. No worries. We're good.
No, we'll, we'll figure it out like we always do, one way or another. So, and we, and we've touched on, we're gonna have a, it sounds like we're gonna have an executive session with the attorney next month to talk about the building moratorium. The attorney has questions. We can't just have a flat out building moratorium. It has to be very focused on, you know, specifics. So she wants to chat with, with you Chuck, and I think we need to have Michael there if he's available, Mark, myself and the rest of the city council, of course. So. Library, so we are quickly moving to the end of the month here in a week. Will be the last day that, well, they will be taking care of the library. It'll be transitioning on July first to SBCEA. Roger Urban has asked for a few things, like he liked the contact information for Pacific Power to transfer the electric bill, the alarm system, garbage, we don't know who's paying for the garbage right now, things like that, questions about where we get the janitorial supplies. So Dawn's helping out with that. I think Mark was gonna answer a few questions there too. So we're working that out. I wanted to mention, I didn't have time last, last council meeting, but we did, we did, three of us went to the event at the library. It was called the Monroe Community Library, A New Chapter, that event. They wanted me to give a speech, so I gave a speech. And I can tell you right now, I, I don't think I've seen that many people at the library, except maybe like for the light parade, ever. So there were a lot of people there. It was quite the turnout.
Really positive.
Yep. And then let's see here, we are making really great progress on the new city website. I'm going to give you guys just a little sneak peek because it's still in progress. But we made tremendous progress on Friday when the web developer's boss reached out to the former city administrator. And the former city administrator gave us full access to the current city website, so we can actually download all the files and get a proper backup. So that is in progress. So that, that was wonderful news. Is the alternative, I talked to the city attorney, wasn't going to be pretty. So I'm, I'm glad this worked out. And then a few things with the city attorney. We'll touch on this just briefly, the charter spectrum franchise agreement. It's very close. Right now it's with Spectrum with their, their attorneys right now, just a couple minor tweaks. So we might end up having a special session, we'll see. And then I already mentioned the city engineering services agreement. We'll talk about that in a little bit. I have a separate agenda item. This is another thing that the attorney's working on, one eighty North Eighth Street. And that property, we'll talk about that more. And then I already mentioned the executive session and we still need to plan something fun this summer. So there's that. Is there any questions on that report?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right. We're gonna go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. Next item on the agenda, the following items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. In which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. If any item involves a potential conflict of interest, council members should so note before adoption of the consent agenda, a motion to accept the consent agenda is appropriate. So meeting minutes are in here, the financials are in here. And of course, those are going to be paid.
I do want to say the meeting minutes are about the best I've ever seen.
That would be, thank you, Dawn.
Why, thank you. Mayor Sheets, I did also sneak in a few APs for you to sign that came in last minute today that have a check attached, just so you're aware.
Okay. I have all kinds of fun things to sign tonight.
Yes, you do.
I wanted to make a comment on the invoice for the manhole, the resealing of the manholes. It's, and Dawn, I think Mark mentioned this, the quantity on this invoice is wrong. I don't know why it says forty-two.
It's, it's for the, some vertical feet. That was the explanation. So it's, it's five holes and most of them are eight feet, a few of them have, give or take. So yeah, it's, it's per vertical foot for some reason.
Little me, I'm like forty-two. Well, that would be nice, but no. And Dawn's here, if you've got any questions, she will happily answer them for you.
We still keeping track of, or are they still keeping track of the extra hours they're having to put in?
Dawn, are you guys keeping track of your extra hours?
Yes, sir. I have been, I think Mark is also. So I'm using Excel personally. That way it adds up for me automatically. But since we're, I guess we could start including where we're at on those during council is just they're not really complete until the end of the month.
Okay.
Yeah, I've been writing in detail what I'm doing during those periods of time. And then approximately how many minutes or, and or hours being spent.
And I'll entertain a motion whenever you guys are ready. No pressure. No pressure.
I don't see anything jumping out at me.
That's good.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda as written.
Second.
Thank you. Alright. Council Cuthbertson and Council Williams, are you ready to vote?
Yes.
Alright, we'll go ahead and do that. Alright, we'll start with you, Counselor Ray.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Cuthbertson.
Yes.
Counselor Myers.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Alright, we're gonna move away from the consent agenda, we're gonna move into new business. So uh, we're gonna start with our, we have a slug of resolutions. So Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six, a resolution returning funds from Storm Fund, beginning balance to the Public Works Fund. And Dawn, is there anything you want to touch on with that, before they?
So essentially, what happened was the Storm Fund was not separated from the Public Works Fund until this current fiscal year. And when I went back, um, the previous or former city administrator only had me do, I think it was a year at the time. Um, to go back and guesstimate how much we should put in that fund for beginning balance. During our audit, um, which occurred, we finalized it just after we did our supplemental budget. Um, the auditors came up with an amount that they felt was fair to move forward for the soup, or for the Storm Fund. So that twenty-five thousand was not accounted in that, and it no longer needs to be transferred separately. I've already transferred or did a journal entry for the full amount. That the auditors wanted to see in the Storm Fund for the beginning of this year.
Does that make sense? Any questions on that for Dawn?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six. A resolution returning funds from Storm Fund, beginning balance to the Public Works Fund.
Second. Alright, thank you. Any other questions? Are we ready to vote? Okay. Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Cuthbertson?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
And Counselor Ray?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Next up is. We're fine with the audit, definitely. So this is Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven. A resolution authorizing engagement of services for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five annual municipal audit. So yes, audit time again.
Yes, I'm supposed to start the audit August eighth, um, so I want to allow plenty of time and get this, get this out of the way. I'm sure there's other resolutions to come. Trying, trying to catch them where I can and get them taken care of quickly.
No, makes sense.
Yeah.
I would like to make a motion on that.
Like to make motion on Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven, a resolution authorizing the engagement of services for the annual municipal audit.
Okay, any questions for Dawn regarding the next audit we have coming down the bike here? Are you ready to vote? Alright. Counselor Ray?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Cuthbertson?
Yes.
And Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Okay. Next up is. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight, a resolution approving transfer of funds. From general administration to public works per adoption of the supplemental budget.
We're just moving it.
Which one are you looking at?
Twenty-eight.
So this was, um, this is a combination of our, I guess that we would justify it as our supplemental budget. I also did confirm with Kathy in Harrisburg. As long as it's not more than ten percent of our complete and total budget amount, which is about three million dollars. We are good to do this via resolution. I did go a little bit higher than what I was originally going to do for moving funds to public works. The reason being. Is that when Storm was separated and I did the journal entries after we had finalized our budget. Um, we actually started this fiscal year with a negative amount in public works, and the only funds we have going in public works currently. Are the facility fees. So they, they absolutely have to have a positive amount going forward into the next fiscal year.
So Dawn, we're looking at what we have in the packet for twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight versus what's on the agenda.
What is it?
Uh, so you know, on the agenda is what I read, what's in the packet is a resolution transferring funds. For beginning fund balances adopted with the supplemental budget for biennial twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-six. So.
That should be the appropriate.
It's the right stuff, it's from general administration to public work.
Yeah.
It's, it's worded differently, yeah.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Yep, so just making sure that we're on the same page here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, continue.
I think that's all I had to say about it.
Oh, okay.
Making sure you knew why we were doing what we're doing.
Yeah.
I just wanted to point it out, just in case somebody questioned what you mentioned and what's not here.
Right, no, that's fine, it's, we need to be on the same page.
I'll make a uh, motion that we adopt Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight. A resolution transferring funds for beginning fund balances, adopted with the supplemental budget for biennial twenty-four to twenty-six.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for Dawn or in general? Good. Alright, we shall vote then. Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Cuthbertson?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
And Counselor Ray?
Yes.
There. Just looking, making sure, okay, next up, yes, yet another resolution. This is Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-nine, a resolution accepting audit findings and response to deficits noted in the audit. And we have also included the actual, this is the plan of action is attached to the, the back of the resolution as well.
So the two deficiencies on here, um, were both repeat findings. Um, not a huge surprise, funds were not separated out properly. Including the Storm and Street Funds. So that was a repeat, as well as not having our audit in timely. Uh, we are now. I think this is the quickest audit we've ever finished, though, we did it within three months. Um, we were just behind because the previous one wasn't finished until February of this year.
This seems like we're back to back audits.
Yeah, I know the feeling.
Yeah, I know you do. So entertain a motion on this.
Try to be entertaining today.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-nine. A resolution accepting audit findings and response to deficiencies noted in the audit.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Comments, questions, as you read through that? There are that resolution with the letter, the response with the plan of action. Ready to vote then? Okay, Counselor Ray?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Cuthbertson?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we are moving on to the last resolution. The Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty, and I'd like to say for the record. That in the time I've been mayor, we have never had thirty resolutions. By June, in a calendar year. So this is quite astounding, to say the least. This one is kind of a, this is a resolution regarding the display of flags on city property. It's a very simple one. What I've, I've, I would like to have, we right now, we have a, we got our flag pull up now. We have the US flag is flying, like to get the state flag up, and we're talking about a, a, another flag. But I'm, Mark is gonna figure out a different way to, where we're gonna situate that one. It might be down at the park, cause we have a, a flagpole down there.
A city Monroe flag?
Well, that would be fun. I don't know, we'd have to have someone design it.
Wouldn't it just?
It could be.
The other flag that Mark had me looking, looking into was the um, missing in action.
Oh, that'd be good.
Yeah, the POW.
Yes, correct.
Yeah, so I asked him about that one as well.
Yeah, I think it's flown down the museum, too.
Yeah. So it's just a simple resolution.
I make a motion to approve Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash thirty, a resolution regarding the display of flags on city property.
Would like to second it.
I'll go ahead and second that.
I have a question real quick.
Yep.
So. I just don't want to get in a thing where people are upset, cause they want this one done and this one done and this one done and this one done.
Right.
Is that gonna leave us open to that?
Yeah.
There's only three flags.
Yeah, I mean, we're.
State, US.
US state, and then, if we have one, and then.
Okay.
And then a commemorative flag that council has to approve.
Okay, gotcha, 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 gotcha. I just wanted to make sure, cause I want to make sure that it's equal and fair for everybody, and then also that we don't have a huge thing, so perfect, okay, I just want to make sure that. I understood clearly what we were saying by council.
Yeah. Any other questions?
And it also doesn't stop anybody from buying their own flag on their own property.
Oh, absolutely not, absolutely not.
Yes. Okay, any other questions? Okay, shall we vote? Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Ray?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. We're done with resolutions for now, okay. Alright, I do have a proclamation in here as well. Is for Independence Day. I think I'm gonna save that for the end, so we'll come back, cause we have other business we need to get to. Alright, let's move on and we'll come back. Okay. There we go. Alright, um, we're reviewing the Oregon Cascade West Council Governments Agreement, and that is in the packet. Just gotta find it. And I'll consider that's written, that was a topic of interest for you. And Dawn, I think you put in here how much?
It's fifteen hundred a year, um, it's on one of your copies, but it's fifteen hundred a year for that particular. Yeah.
I know, I reached out to them. Like in the March timeframe for planning services, and they didn't have any planning services that they offered at that point in time. Apparently they do now, so just as an FYI, did you have that now?
I was gonna say, I remember them specifically saying they didn't have it, but I saw it in here, so. You know.
They, they're, in this scope of services, they're covering quite a bit that we haven't seen before.
And when we call, they haven't had.
Yeah, and then the next thing is. That, got the scope of services, now, finish reading it. I was just thinking it. Is it on an availability basis, just as, as on needed? So I mean, what if their services aren't available, cause they're.
Right, right.
Right.
Good question.
It, it sounds pretty. I'm skeptical. I would like. I don't know, I don't know if I want somebody to come down and try to convince us that this is gonna happen.
Well, I mean, we can ask Ryan to come down.
Yeah. I mean, but he's gonna tell us what we want to hear.
Of course.
I'm. I don't know. I'm on the fence.
Yeah, I know.
Only, only because we just don't have extra to be.
Well, we're looking for the benefit.
Right, right.
And I mean, right now, council governments, I mean, what, you're going to a couple meetings. And we're not even really, the city's not even really part of them.
Yeah, it's, it, and it's changed, it's a lot different now, going to the meetings, before we were, we actually had a seat on the board and. We would have good discussions with all the different cities and, um, so it's, it's changed a bit. I don't know, I mean.
Well, I mean, they have included grant writing in their scope of work now, along with planning.
But you still, on the last thing, you have, you're still paying hourly rates.
This is true.
On top of what you're paying them.
Not the fifteen hundred that you're paying now.
Fifteen hundred only gives you the access.
Access too. And then you're having to pay for all the services.
But with a new, like, city administrator coming on board, that might free up some of this stuff to focus on some of our needs that are a little bit more pertinent.
True.
This is true. Yeah.
Depending on how, you know, with. Yeah, it's a little up in the air.
Yeah, there's that, there's that piece.
Do we have to decide right away what's our deadline?
Um, let's see, there's actually. Dawn, do you recall if there was a deadline, is it the end of the month? There've been several things, it's been the end of the month, I can't remember if this was one of them or not.
I, it may be the beginning of next year, but I would need to look, I would have to look at our APs, assume when we paid it last year, I don't know for sure.
July first.
Twenty twenty.
Okay.
Yep.
Goes to twenty twenty-seven.
Now it's a two-year.
That's fifteen hundred per year annually?
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
And it may be, I'm, I'm guesstimating fifteen hundred, it's been going up each year, and so I kind of went with what. Historically, it's gone up in, in, you know, in price. This year it'd be about fifteen hundred, give or take, and then next year could be like sixteen fifty.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I don't know, I'm on the fence too, I'm almost thinking we need to get Ryan down here, though.
Yeah, I'd like to talk to a representative from there.
How everybody else feels.
I think it can't hurt to have a representative come down and speak to us, but I'd like to understand what we'd get for the fifteen hundred dollars, like, sell it, sell us a pitch. Don't just, like, show us some, some proof of what we can expect as deliverables.
Well, and I, I would like that too, because I, there's, I don't know how many of you guys are familiar with it, so it's good to get a refresher. And make sure that you guys are all on board and really know what's going on, rather than, like, I've seen it change over the years and, and through all that. So, but you might have a different perspective than I do, and so for you to get, have all the information instead of just guessing off of the bits and pieces you've gotten.
Yes, sir.
If I may.
Of course you can.
In my early somewhat years of doing public works and city work. It might be something you might want to consider waiting until you have your new city administrator on board. It might be something you might wanna consider waiting until you have your new city administrator on board. Because most, most administrators have worked with somebody in the past where they don't need outside help, or they do.
Right.
These people, not these people, or this type of stuff, it might be something you wanna coordinate with them, or at least talk to them.
Yeah, we wanna take advantage of deficiencies that person's already built.
Yeah.
Well, we can coordinate with them and then we can get Ryan down here too.
Yeah.
That's a really good suggestion.
Great, great suggestion. Thank you so much.
Okay. Okey dokey. Any other comments before we move on? Kind of put a pause on it for the moment. I guess we'll go ahead and move on. Next item is the DQ response from council, that's in the packet. That's this, yeah, it's the next item. Yeah, that's what Chuck was talking about. I don't know if we need to talk more about it or not, but I think we've kind of talked it to death personally, but.
You're still a DMA now, no matter whether you like it or not.
Right.
Groovy. Okay. Any other comments or questions on that agenda item?
I'm just thankful that Chuck's here to help us get the Cliff Notes versions that we understand what's going on without having to try to wade through because I would be lost, so that, that's very helpful. Very much appreciated.
Very much appreciated.
When this first came in, I struggled through it a lot doing it. As a matter of fact, I think DQ, TMDL blackballed me because I kept calling them out on whether OARS were wrong and contradicting. For a while, they stopped talking to me or answering my questions because I was just on them all the time. It, it's, it's. You see, the management plan, it is that thick. I mean, it is just crazy.
All right, let's move on to review engineering services agreement that is also in the packet. So work with the city attorney on this, so this is a final draft, mind you, there are some blanks we need to fill in. But I wanted to make sure that I got it in front of you guys so you can see it.
And is it? What, I, she said we needed to make some changes. Do you have, once again, Cliff Notes version of what?
No, I don't have the clip, I don't have.
What the changes were?
I was just like, let's get the agreement, let's get it in front of council. So I, we wanted to make sure that we had all the exhibits with it, so I believe exhibit A is here. And then I got B over the weekend.
Nice.
And then C, C is in here too, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so we got everything with it now. So that's the exciting part is we actually have everything now. And Chuck's here, so if he wants to take a gander at it too.
I've gandered.
You've gandered, you're okay with it?
I'm fine.
Okay.
I think Branch works with a lot of small to medium sized cities. They're in Eugene, but they've opened other offices, there's one for Vals now around. You know, working at a, at an engineer firm for quite a while myself. Branch does something that we never did, and I really appreciate Branch for it. As Branch understands when it's no longer something that they should be doing. They say, oh, you really, here's the three that specialize in that.
Right.
These are the ones you need to be talking to.
Well, that's good.
They're good about referring things that they're telling others.
They're, yes, absolutely.
Their wheelhouse.
They, they know that wheelhouse, which is really good and helps keep costs down, they don't. They don't wanna be just the, the pass through and mark stuff up from somebody else.
Right, well, that's good.
But they have gotten bigger and their staff has gotten better, while I'm not promoing them, other, other, uh, engineering firms have also. But I think, I don't think the city would be disappointed with them.
Well, and they've done work for us in the past, and they do work for the city of Arisburg.
They do work for us and a few other small cities that they understand their limitations, they all pretty much live around in the areas out there, so.
Yeah, that's good. I'm just kind of, I don't think I need to vote or anything. You know, if there's any questions on it.
Right.
And what I'll do is I'll go back to the attorney, we'll finish it and then bring it back.
Been here twice.
Well, twice the pot.
I know. I think I'm seeing it twice, maybe not.
I was just so darn excited to get over here.
Oh, yeah. That's why this packet's so thick.
Yeah, oh, yeah, of course. Well, that's, that's the name of it, well, because there's this up there.
Yeah.
Yep.
For part of it's in here twice. Oh, good.
Questions, comments, I'll make, I'll make sure to bring the final back to you guys. If any's helping me, since I certainly can't do this. We pay her the big bucks.
Excited to see it so we can get moving forward.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, not that I'm trying to go back on something else we already looked at, but I did notice that they had the hourly rates for your cog in here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, we saw that too.
Okay.
I know. I know, I was like, yeah, and then they wanna charge us. I saw that.
See too much of a break for.
I saw that because I was already cranky, so that's why I want some other people's eyes on it.
Want to put, you know, alluding back to that cog stuff, if they wanted to put hourly rates on there, they should have had hourly rates.
Yeah.
Not a member, an hourly rates as a member, so they could sell the fifteen hundred dollars.
I thought it, that's what it was.
Yes, I agree.
It's just two different levels of.
Yeah.
So it's like hourly rates are whatever it is. Most places like that will charge like double the rate if you're not a member.
Well, and I just don't remember them charging us before, like if we had needed help, I don't remember, but maybe they did. And I just don't remember.
I don't remember it either, I mean.
It just was available, so anyway.
My first tenure was six or seven years ago, but.
Okay, so I will, well, the cog is one thing. We'll get Ryan in this, when the new city administrator is hired, we'll get them and.
Right.
Ryan and us together, and we'll have a lovely chat about all of this.
Sounds good.
Yeah, so we'll do that probably in the July or August timeframe. Um, and then we were just talking about the engineering services agreement, so like I said, I will work with the attorney, get that finalized and bring it back. So you guys can take a look at it and approve it. Moving on to review bid for Eighth Street Main Water Extension, there are two bids to separate. Handout here, so Mark went and got two bids. So as an FYI, he got one from H and J Construction and the other from McKenzie Excalibur. And Mark told me that I believe we would be doing, if we did, H and J would be option B, is what I believe Mark told me.
Okay.
And Mark also, if he was here, he would reiterate that H and J does a lot of work here in the city. They've done a lot of things for us already, so they're pretty familiar with our system.
In case you can't locate, that second bit is only one page, so it's on the back of the third page for H and J, yeah.
So is, my, my question is, is option B comparable to what's on the back, or am I looking at two different things? Do you, am I making myself clear? Because I feel like I'm.
I believe Mark told me that those are, those are comparable.
Okay.
And H and J comes in cheaper, and I, I double checked that with him, and he said yes.
Okay.
I said, okay.
I just wanted to make sure that we were apples to apples and not.
More, I don't know why.
Well, yeah, I'm not.
Is that what you're seeing?
Two inch.
I'm not sure why that is.
One forty and one sixty, yeah.
Well, they're gonna put those service laterals in. And H and J doesn't have the service on. I think. See him on.
With meter boxes.
And the other guy, McKenzie has service lines, forty linear.
Yeah, I think, I think Mark told me that it was all included with H and J. We can get clarif, we can get clarification.
I, I'd like to get some clarification, just because I don't.
Better breakdown of it.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable.
Because this is two inch PVC and this is four inch, so I'm not sure what's on.
He was saying option B.
I'm looking at option B.
And then.
But McKenzie is two inch, right, two?
That's what I'm looking at, so McKenzie's close, almost like.
And then this one says four inch, yeah, option B, so.
Yeah.
Well, McKenzie doesn't tell you the depth too, so I don't know.
So what I will do is, Mark is sick, but I'll see if I can get back together with him when he's less sick. And get clarification, are you guys okay with me texting?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure that we're comparing the same services, because otherwise we're not. It's, you can't, you can't do it too.
Yeah, yeah, so.
We'll get clarification.
Yeah, so, yeah.
So I will get that. Street. Water extension.
Does that make sense, Chuck? Did you see what we were talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm pretty sure it's all included, option B is the correct way to do this because that would fall under a service line. And that was the idea with the two, two inch lines, it was first talked about just for, for ease, if there was a discount on two inch. Sometimes you find a two inch on the pipe, which is real cheaper, so that could have been just running both sides of the road, since two of them are on this side, two on this side. So you didn't have to cross the road, they called me over, I looked at, it's gravel road, who cares, you know, we can cut across the service lines. You don't wanna go to a six inch because then you're talking, having the water line exemption from your engineer, so that we've already talked about. So you can't go that big, we don't have the city engineer currently, so, but you could do the four inch run down, do a couple taps and. Yeah, H and J normally always supplies that in their stuff, they're one of my certified contractors, one of our six. I've, I've used, I've worked with McKenzie on some things, but they're not one of our certified ones in town, but they have done some other ones. So.
Yeah, the only reason I wanna see the, the full breakdown is so we have documentation.
So he, he did this quick and easy, if you want a full, accurate line item breakdown, that needs to be done that way. However, because the cost of this is under twenty five thousand, you don't have to have three separate bids, it's can be informal.
Okay.
Quick quotes, and you're still more than legal.
And I feel like, like the fact you're putting in four inch line versus a two inch PVC.
Yeah, and so, um, yeah, I, I can work with Mark or him call and we'll, uh, we'll resubmit this out with a line item for, for each item you'd wanna see on there.
Yeah, or just so we can see to compare.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think the only real difference as far as line item would be the, the laterals, service laterals. Bring out, uh, this one, this one from McKenzie's. Including the laterals and the meter boxes. And like I said, H and J probably includes it, we just don't have it written down.
They normally do, and of the four laterals that are out there too, already have meter box, so. So, I mean, I don't wanna be choose if they bad, anyway, so we can break it down much further.
Okay.
To go, you know.
I'd be happy with just them saying, hey, this includes all of it. Little note on there, that's all there.
What part of Eighth Street are they doing this on?
North, or, yeah, north part of Eighth.
So it'd be the north side of Eighth and Main.
Where the Steve Rose property is.
Okay.
And the abandoned house.
Yes, up to the abandoned. Which, as it was dug up, and H and J was the one doing the dig out. And prepping that, so they know where all the stuff is in the ground, they did all the locates, which would help keep the price down when issues happening. They brought the line from the main on, this is great, again, I gotta call, you gotta come see this. And they brought the line over from the main on Eighth down. It kind of leaves the right of way. And then gets to the abandoned house to the meter, but right before that, they widened off to send it down to the next house. Off that part of that service line. It.
There's a lot of funny stuff out there.
It just needs to be read on.
You know, I, I think you've answered my questions as far as who to select tonight, actually.
You wanna make a motion?
Yeah, if you think we can do it tonight with that, with a motion.
Yeah, we totally can.
I'll make a motion that we make a selection on the Eighth Street Waterline Extension. Vote, and I.
Would your selection be?
My selection's H and J.
Okay. That's something I'd like to second that.
And option B, sorry.
Yeah, you're good, thank you.
I'd like a further breakdown.
I'd like a little clarification. Okay.
We're dead without a second.
We're dead, sorry, we tried.
Tried.
Good job.
I know it wasn't writing, but. I trust Chuck.
Yeah, oh, and.
And Chuck, I trust.
Yeah. Yeah, I just, I like to see it broken down.
So a little more clear.
Yeah. We're a little gun shy.
If I was in your position.
So what I'm going to do is I'm going to send an email to Chuck at Mark and share this wonderful information.
Perfect.
So we get it.
Perfect.
I should now, a line item breakdown to Mark that he can then forward on.
Well, I mean, to me, if you look at it, I mean. Two inch PVC. And the price is, you know, almost fifteen thousand. If we went with half of the PVC two inch for option A, instead of doing two down the line. We'd be under ten thousand for H and J, so I mean, if, even if you look at it that way. They're, they're coming ahead.
I'll say, for me, the clarification is like, okay, so like on McKenzie, they're talking about laterals and I'm trying to see where they talk about laterals on the option B. Bigger line or not.
Well, option B, it does say saddles. Four inch main line.
Yes, it just says saddles.
Yeah, so a saddle is the piece that wraps around the main for that service line. So they just didn't write it all the way up. But we can do, we can do that, that's nothing.
Okay, you have the technology, good. Okay.
Thank you for helping us nervous now.
Yes.
McKenzie, you'd almost have to ask McKenzie for a further breakdown too, and saying, this is not enough capacity with two inch, what is their bid for?
So, and, and that bid could be based on two or four, it was pretty vague on that, so, you know, having a little extra. And one of the other things I can do since when H and J is called in, they put in the parts that I've already specced. They will put in this type of service line, this type of brass, this type of meter. Because they're one of our registered contractors and McKenzie's not. So it should be further down the line going, yes, you're not gonna use brass from, from BNI. No, it's gonna be, you know, two hundred pound, you know, McDonald's or Mueller brass, and these are the part numbers. Which may actually raise their price a bit. But, yeah, H and J area knows what's required. But, yeah, we'll do a quick breakdown, that way you can see, should be, should never have any questions, you can always get answers, right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to one eighty North Eighth Street, we've gotten some complaints about very tall grass and rats. So. Public Works had a question about cutting the grass and charging that against the property, uh, or doing a lean. So I actually talked to the city attorney about this. And she said we do need to send a letter to whoever is paying the property taxes on that property.
Oh, dear. Oh, dear.
To let them know that they need to mow, or we're gonna go and mow it, and then we're gonna put a lean on the property. So I just wanted to. So I just wanted to give you an FYI.
Yeah. It's been, it's been a few months since I've looked at your fee schedule. Do you have something in your fee schedule for mowing your?
Don, we do, don't we?
I know that last year we did it for Dundee Monroe Land Company. I can't, I I know that we had a breakdown for them, and I can look at that. And see what we had emailed them, but I don't know if that was an actual, you know, if you really calculated. Our people's time, the fuel, the, you know, the equipment use, I don't know that that was really all taken into factor.
Right, and then you tack on your twenty percent administrative fee and all that. We end up doing this quite often, as a matter of fact, we're going through it right now again. Before the fourth, trying to get some people, we started a couple weeks ago. Couple years ago. One, because public work staff is not a whole lot of people. Our attorney, our city attorney at the time. Suggested, and the city's been doing it, at least Harrisburg's been doing that, and two other cities I work with, been doing it since then. They call any landscaping company that's local. And then they tack an administrative fee onto that, so you don't have a property owner after you do this, comes back, say, you had seven hours of public works time. Plus, you charged me for a lawnmower and a weed eater, and. It puts you in the middle of the argument. Call somebody, say, hey, you need this cut down to these specifications, it needs to be flat, cleaned up, raked up. Done here, whatever that fee is, then your administrative fee, whatever's in your fee schedule, ours is twenty percent. And that way, it's just, you've done the paperwork, if you had to put a lean on the place, all that's in your administrative fee, that's clear, and there's no.
No, no other cost, where they had to go do the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Do we even have a mower right now?
That's what the cost is, and again, because it's below the state minimum, so much below, you don't have to go out and get bids and quotes. You know, if you have a registered landscaper, or you can call three and say, hey, how much do this property? Pick the cheapest ones and out there, so you are doing the best for the property itself, right, to get the, you know, providing you give them a scope of, okay, it's going to be mowed, it's going to be raked, it's going to be weed eat, no blackberries, no vegetation. More than ten inches on site, you know, and give them a breakdown of what you want done. It takes a whole lot of internal arguing later down the road.
Does anyone know of someone in our area currently, I know we had, I think it was Ramos at one point, but I don't know if anybody that actively does yard maintenance in this area any longer.
There's, there's a few of them.
We just called a couple people out Junction City, because we don't really have one.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Okay. All right, well, Chuck, I'm going to have you vacate the seat, because we're going to interview a couple candidates.
Woo! I do not want another job. Monroe takes way too much.
We're needy. You can.
I will, yeah. Take care of that. For the Eighth Street, I'll get that fixed, you guys. And. Do you want me to call you tomorrow? Okay. Okay. Let's, let's try to start. Okay. Let's try to start getting together and, if not Wednesday. Okay. That way you have a little time to do any modifications. Okay. Okay, sounds good. All right. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I know, I think super comfortable.
Well, I know, tell you guys, they were a box, I don't know what else to say.
They're better than what we had.
Which was nothing.
Whose nameplate is that, is that Mark?
That's Mark.
Okay.
You too, thank you, sir.
All right.
The thing is, it's okay.
I think we're fine, okay. All right. Mr. Haven, we have you up first. You're not interested? Would you like to come up? For some fun questions.
Yes, really bad, right?
Oh, wow. Yeah, there you go, perfect, thank you, thank you very much, okay. All right, so I'm going to read my spiel, and then we're going to ask a couple questions. So the Monroe City Council would like to thank you for taking time to answer our questions tonight regarding the current council vacancy. Your answers will help us get to know you better and determine if you're a good fit for the city council. For the interview, each of the city councillors, including myself, will take a turn asking you a question. We have a few questions we're going to ask you. At any time, if you need to take a break, just let us know.
And there's no right or wrong answer.
No, no pressure.
Yeah.
And I want you to feel like you're being pressured at all. So I'm going to go ahead and hand it off to Councilor.
All righty, question number one. Have you previously served on a governing board of any type in a business, government, not for nonprofit organization or church, or as a leader in any organization? And if so, please briefly describe the organization, your role, and the number of years you served in that capacity.
Does scouts count?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes, scouts, scouts.
Can you tell she was in?
Cub Scouts, I was a committee member, I was also PAP chairman. Boy Scouts, I was assistant scout master.
Okay.
I also was part of the council. I was one of the three members in the council that conducted Eagle Scout boards. Pretty much it.
Yeah, that's great, awesome.
That's a lot.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, my turn.
You're up.
What do you believe are three strengths of the city of Monroe and or the current administration?
I'm sorry?
What do you believe are the three strengths of the city of Monroe and or the current administration of the city of Monroe?
Three strengths? I think one strength is, it's a small community. So it's a lot easier for everyone in the community to be able to put their voice forward. Instead of falling through cracks. And also because it's small. It's easier for people to contact the council and officers. To be able to be heard. And. Question.
Two's okay.
Yeah.
Reminds me of my hometown, I grew up in a small town.
That's a good one. Home town.
Do you want me to ask this one?
Do we have you, do we have, I thought we have you adjusted.
Oh, we don't?
Do we?
We don't have you, council, yeah, we do, okay, I'll, I'll ask, I'll ask two questions. One second. Okay. Next up, does your interest in serving on the city council stem from a personal interest or goal? Is there something in particular you hope to accomplish, and why is serving on the city council important to you?
Wow.
It's tough, isn't it?
Yeah.
That might have been my fault, anyway. If it helps, I know you and I chatted a little bit, and you talked about beautification. You mentioned that to me when we had one of our chats.
Yeah. I know when my husband and I first moved to Oregon, almost ten years ago, just shy of ten years. We lived in Eugene, we landed there for the first five years renting. And when we first drove to Corvallis along Ninety-Nine. Bursting out of my husband's mouth when we came through Monroe's, I can live here. And I was like, well, I could do that, because, again, reminds me of where I grew up. But you know what? Since then, we've driven a lot of places in western Oregon. And it's one thing that I think we are missing. And that's curb appeal, especially along Ninety-Nine. That's a, it it doesn't take much for curb appeal. I mean, I, when I walk my dogs down Ninety-Nine, and I look at Long Timber, and I'm like. I wonder who did their landscaping, because they can do IR. It doesn't take much. It's like, we were talking about the hanging baskets. Like they do in Florence and a lot of other cities. And then Dan was saying, well, then you got to hire someone to water them, I said, I couldn't lay down. Who says they have to be real? Rinse them every now and then, or swap them out, like every six months, you know, fall, winter things, and spring, summer. Um, but, yeah. I know I participated in a workshop, or a work session. Cleaning up the trash along Ninety-Nine.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we did that a few years ago.
I think that's something, I can actually make a contest throughout the city.
That's a great idea.
Naverhood.
Yeah.
Also, like. My parents lived in Imperial Beach in California, small beach town, real small. And for Fourth of July one year, they had a contest. Who can have the most. Beautiful Fourth of July setup for their yard. Not necessarily like a bunch of lights and decorations and stuff, my mom actually won, they live in a condo, they don't have a big yard or anything. She just had a simple display, the front door is actually on the inside courtyard of the condo. The back door was to the main drag, because they live right across the street from the beach. My mom just had a small display of red, white, and blue flowers, and she won. We could do small things like that.
Okay, excellent. This question will probably be a little bit easier.
Oh, and all you get is bragging rights.
So my next question for you is, city council regularly meets at six PM on the fourth Monday of each month. And it lasts about two hours, sometimes a little bit longer. If you're selected as city councillor, you're also expected to chair or co-chair a committee and participate in at least two city committees. Will your schedule permit your regular attendance at our regularly scheduled city council meetings and or committee meetings?
Like I told Dan when we met, I'm. I'll do my best, but my husband and I are retired. And this time of year, we go camping on a small travel trailer. And. So I can't promise I would be here every month for that. But the ones that I wouldn't be here for, I could certainly be on Zoom.
Oh, absolutely.
That, that works, too.
Yes, some of us actually, I don't, but some of us.
I travel for work, so I often have to, because I'm not here, right?
We've had councillors in the past that they had a home here, and they had a home in Arizona, they would just call in.
And sometimes we're sick and we can't come, and that's okay, you know, life, life happens.
Tornia is one that I can't pronounce it, one down here. And a high angle one, so I'm going to be having service.
Yeah, yeah, that always comes first.
Absolutely. Okay.
So what do you believe are three weaknesses of the city of Monroe and or the current administration? You kind of mentioned a little bit back, your curb appeal would be kind of.
Yeah, um. Weaknesses are. Now, this isn't anything against.
Absolutely, no.
It doesn't even have anything to do with you guys. Um, one thing is, a lot of people in town and in the overall community jump to conclusions about things quickly. Without getting the facts. And I think if. When things are going on, or things are taking a long time, the sidewalks, the ADA. Building of them, you know, and then the redoing of them several times. If perhaps communication could come from the city to the community. That could go a long ways.
Yes.
Permit, people complain, they can't do this, and they can't do that. Well. You should look into what you're allowed to have or not have, the responsibility doesn't fall on the city, it falls on an individual that wants to do something. But there again, a lot of people, I'm not mentioning any one person, I've noticed. With the Facebook pages, it's been a handful of people, it's been more than one or two, it's been quite a few. People are just. Quick to do something, not think that they need, that there's a government involved, and they need to have. There's ordinances and whatnot.
Perfect.
But, um, so there again, maybe every once in a while, you just got to remind people, the whole community that. You know, there are rules and regulations, and if you plan on doing anything, perhaps you need to check with the city. It's like we put solar, we had solar panels put on our roof. And solar company went through the city and the county to make sure it was allowed before we, they would install it.
Right.
Um. So there again, I guess, communication, again.
Absolutely, okay, yeah.
Very valid point.
That was just two.
Yeah, that's okay.
Yeah, that's perfect, you're doing great. We'll go on to the next question, which is mine. It's going to be an easy one, so if you could make one change or improvement, what would that change or improvement be?
One change or improvement, something I have not touched on before, I think. A youth center. Something for. Grade school all the way up to high school. Something that they can all do, I grew up. I grew up as a military brat and I was in the military and. We had community centers that kids that were like in first, second grade, all the way up to. Senior year in high school. We could do and we all got along and we all played together and. There were pool tables and foosled tables and activities we could do and. You know, we were all sports and whatnot.
Nice.
And you could get teenagers to volunteer as well as adults.
You have a great idea.
I like that, yeah, thank you. Okay, the city council must render decisions regarding the implementation of policies and or programs that may be somewhat difficult. Are you willing to take on the responsibility of making decisions that are in the best interest of the public? Even though they may be somewhat difficult or unpopular?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know.
I was taking a drink.
You've been drinking?
He's been drinking.
Alcohol, I haven't had alcohol for like a year. I woke up at two thirty with charlie horses in both legs.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, sorry. Here's my question. Um, or it's the one written down for me. Please complete this sentence, a Monroe city councillor should be.
Flexible. Determined. Um. Willing to see all points of view. Able to make the decision whether it is in their own best interest or their own. Um, how do I want to say this?
Per detriment.
Um. When I lived in Las Vegas. Our senator was Harry Reid. Harry Reid. I don't even know if he's still alive.
No.
I think he's passed.
Yeah, I think so too. He was a Mormon. He was a Democrat. And the majority of his constituents were Democrats. Cause Las Vegas area is a main Democratic area, Democrat area, um. Now, he as Mormon didn't believe in a lot of things Democrats believe in, but he was a Democrat. He just didn't believe in the whole platform. But he didn't, in Washington, he didn't vote. Because of his beliefs. He voted. Because of his constituents' beliefs, so he didn't just vote his personal beliefs. He voted for the best interest of all.
Who he was representing, yes.
Yep, that's good. All right, I guess I'm councillor Linder.
Yes, you are. We voted you.
All right, so. Our next question here is, do you have any interest in or participate in any professional or personal activity? That could lead to or be perceived as a conflict of interest if you become appointed? If yes, please explain. Nope, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I said no.
Okay.
Yeah, it was another.
No. Good. All right.
Okay, looks like it's me.
Right, yes.
Uh, what do you believe is the single most compelling issue facing the city of Monroe? And how would you address it?
I think it's the drinking water.
The water.
How would I address it, um? Just hoping we could get on top of it, I won't drink it. My dogs don't even drink it.
Perfect.
Yeah, we've been working on that part.
Yeah, it is a very big challenge for us.
Yes, yes.
Um, please tell us about any other activities, specialized skills, knowledge or professional experience that would contribute to your effectiveness in serving on the city council. I think you kind of alluded to some of that with your scouts.
Trying to think of something I haven't said before.
Right.
Think you'd be a very good chairperson of a committee. With your experience. It's kind of like leading scouts sometimes.
Well, yeah, with scouts, I, I had a lot of training. Um. I went to wood badge training. And that wasn't like most wood badge trainings, um. Was it back before they combined the Cub Scout and Boy Scout training? I went to the Boy Scout wood badge. And I went through, it wasn't just weekend stuff and occasional night, week, night training. I went to Philamont Scout Ranch through the Sam Houston Area Council in Houston. Um, and we were there, we backpacked in. We went through the training for a whole week and we backpacked out.
Wow.
Um. That was quite an intense training.
Sounds like it.
Lot of problem solving and everything else. And then when we got back, we had to work our ticket, which took a good six months, well, actually almost entire year before we could get our beads. So that was, um. That was a very intense training.
Well, I was gonna say, looking at your app, you mentioned, uh, when you're in the Navy, uh, being the command arms spokesman.
Oh, that's when I was a dependent wife.
Yeah.
Yes, um. I was asked by a captain of the USS Rushmore. To be on bedsmen for the ship. Which is the liaison between the dependents and the command. So when dependents had a problem, whether it was the dependent wife, the dependent husband, or if one of the. Uh, children has problems. And they couldn't get it fixed themselves, they were to come to me, I had a lot of extensive training for that too. Where, um. So that I would have the resources to be able to help them or lead them into the right direction to get help. Um, and this was not just for the enlisted spouse, uh, dependents, it was also for the officer. I had a direct. Open door or phone call to the C O, the X O and the command master.
That's some great experience. Thank you.
Okay, we're on the last question. All right, when you think of Monroe, what is the first thing that comes to mind? There you go. Okay, we're done with our questions. Hello, go ahead and you can hit sit back in your seat. We're gonna, we're going to deliberate for probably two minutes.
Yeah.
You're it. Okay, sounds good, now, um.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Don, did you put the script in the folder?
Sorry, what was that, sir?
I was gonna say, did you put the script in the folder?
No, I had asked you in the email and I didn't get an answer and I didn't put it in there. I put a certificate in there, but I did not put the word.
Let me dig it out of my, hold on.
What, what did she say?
Oh, we're, we're.
She was just asking a question to Don, just thought.
That's where I get script. Remember what we had deliberate.
We're delivering.
Blank it out of my mind.
Discuss. What do we think about Cindy?
No, it's fine.
Okay.
I mean. I think anybody who's willing to serve is. This is a golden opportunity.
I have some hesitation about not being able to be here because that will really put a strain on us.
That is true.
Yeah, and that answered that question was me, I'm fuzzy, that's for sure.
We won't be able to.
It was like, yeah, I might be able to make it.
Well, we can go ahead when she comes back and we get some clarification.
Yeah, the only issue there is, is would she consistently have. Um, access to the internet to be able to connect in. Cause like I said, we, we've worked with that before, that's never been a problem, as long as you can connect into the meeting.
Or the time, I mean, you know, I'm traveling sometimes nine hours, you know, and it's hard, you know, I wanna go to bed while you guys are all deliberating.
Oh, my dude.
I don't know if I've missed any of this, this time I've been in the council, but in my previous tenure, there was a couple of times that. My work sent me to Canada, I mean.
Yeah.
Or, you know, I could, I could, and I couldn't even connect with the internet, I had to be on the phone and talk to them on the phone.
Well, and we, we used to have a thing where if you missed a certain amount of meetings, you were out.
Two unexcused meetings.
Yep.
They had to be unexcused.
Is that still in play?
I don't know.
Probably.
It was in the council.
We haven't really enforced them, so.
It was in the council rules.
No.
Game on.
Come on, we really put him through the wringer.
It wasn't the.
You don't know the wringer. Someday we'll sit down and I'll tell you a little story.
I can tell you a few stories about that deos we had over there. Actually, when I first started, I think they were sitting around tables over there, they didn't even have the judges thing set up.
I would always get the chair that had bang into the thing. And my legs would go to sleep every meeting, cause I'm short. So I couldn't, there was nothing for me to hang on to.
Seven people around that thing is beyond me.
I don't know.
Okay, all right, so we're sending you to come back, we can ask a clarifying question around availability.
So we do have, we do have some significant need right now to be available a little bit, I think that will lighten up once we get staffing.
Yes.
A little bit under.
Someone coming.
Yeah.
At least the administrative assistant part and hopefully. We have an administrator too. Bro, yeah.
Tomorrow.
The last two candidates, right?
Do you want me to do this, I, I apologize, I had some. Unexpected surgery. It's okay.
And it happens, you know?
Yeah, it was.
We just don't like it happening all the time, that sucks.
Yeah, what happened, yeah.
Happened to the economic development thing, yeah, I was sitting down here and now suddenly I get, my email pops up, I'm going, oh, Dan cancelled.
Cancelled it an hour before you were sitting down here.
I worked till like ten minutes before I came down here.
Then that's when you saw it, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
God, it's ten minutes.
I am, I'm sorry, very sorry. You can stop me later, that's fine.
Well, luckily it's close to home, so.
But he had to get drunk.
Only had to put a T-shirt on, I wear my, you know.
Yeah.
I really don't know what I do with myself if I work from home.
Cause you work, yeah. No, no, I gotta be camera ready by five A M.
I know, but it's the face too, you know?
Cindy, we had a clarifying question for you.
Yeah, we just wanted, um, to understand, we, we don't, we're not fully staffed right now in city council and in order to pass resolutions and do things, we need to have. A quorum, is that what it's called?
You're doing great.
So, um, we're just kind of concerned about your availability. Um, it is, we, we do have a lot of things that are going on right now, a lot of moving pieces and sometimes we have even more, um. Times where we have to meet maybe say for an executive session or a special session. Um, there are some committee meetings that you would be expected to attend as well. So I don't know if the full scope of, of the time requirement was really. Portrayed to you correctly. Um, it is a significant amount of time that's, that's going on. I, I don't know exactly what it would be total, I know it's two hours for sure every month. Um, that doesn't include the, the committee meetings that would be required, they are not always on a monthly basis. They're, they're usually like a quarterly basis, but that's a time commitment as well. Um, and then.
Work sessions.
Work sessions, yeah, we do have work sessions which are about an hour.
If you can't be here in person, Zoom is perfectly fine, so I mean, that's perfectly legitimate.
Yeah, absolutely, we just needed to have, I would like to have a little bit more clarification if that was, if those time commitments were okay with you.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Anything else we need to discuss? Okay. Well, I don't know, do we normally do a motion or something for this, I can't remember.
I think the motion was in the air, let's go ahead and vote.
Yeah. Okay.
Work or do, if you want a motion, I'll make it.
Let's do a motion just to cover ourselves.
And that we vote on our city council candidate.
I'll second.
It's okay. All right. Comments, questions, are you ready to vote? Okay, we're gonna do this, councillor Myers.
Yes.
Councillor Cuthbertson.
Yes.
Councillor Williams.
Yes.
Councillor Ray. Great, thank you.
I'm gonna come to work.
I gotta swear yes.
Arrest for the weary.
You can leave it there, just come over.
Oh.
I'll, I'll stand over here so that.
What?
Yeah.
Did you erase them already?
We haven't seen a microphone, let's use mine.
So angry.
I don't.
I know, I can't, it was mentally, it was like.
Okay. I have to cheat because I don't have a memory. Okay. Okay. All right, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I.
I.
And you say your name.
Hi Cynthia Evan.
Do solemnly swear. That I will support the constitution.
I will support the constitution.
And laws of the United States.
Laws of the United States.
And the state of Oregon.
And the state of Oregon.
And of the charter.
And of the charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the city of Monroe.
Of the city of Monroe.
And that I will faithfully.
Yes, faithfully.
And honorably.
Honorably.
Perform the duties of city councillor.
Perform the duties of city councillor.
For which I'm about to assume.
For which I'm about to assume.
Congratulations, you're a city councillor. So where shall we put councillor Evans?
Right now, you have that spot.
Okay.
So I took over, so we have to move everything.
Can't have the whole table.
Yeah, he kicked me down here, so I was gonna make sure he had.
Is that it, meaning he just keeps moving it further and further?
He's got things.
I got things.
Things.
I have something here. All right, when you come on over. Do we have a, a. Do we have a spare piece of paper we can use?
Under it?
No, for a.
Oh.
Nameplate, attend.
Oh, we do. I don't know if I have anything.
Yeah, just a piece of paper folded in half. Okay, that's fine.
That's fine later.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Sorry.
Have you standing there? Um, it's okay, but that sun, it didn't hit me too bad. Need to buy a shade. That is. I'll let you make it pretty in summer.
Well, you're the president. You need to do that, right?
I happily delegate.
Unless you want to take a piece of our packs.
You live in Red Hills?
I do.
Would you too? I'll tell you. Where at?
I live on Aldrich. I'm, I'm one of the second story homes on Aldrich and.
Okay. I live on Tim.
Don, can I give her the certificate? Do we need a copy?
I don't know what we do. Actually, I'll be honest. I don't know.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a picture.
Take a picture. Take a picture, yeah.
And I'll get rid of it.
Thank you.
All right.
We always need volunteer.
Talking about the water line down Eighth Street. I was like.
You're putting the shadow on again.
I know, well, I'm like.
I had to put myself.
Just.
I know you are.
Oh, yeah, I'm in City Limits.
So you know. So much easier.
We're gonna, we're going to get you a. Don will order you a. A name plate.
Oh, I'm in.
I do not. I'm in trouble.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So like.
Why was that? Did you cash your checks or deposit checks now?
Got my sidewalks all formed up.
All right, Don, we'll need a name plate for our new counselor.
Yes, sir, I have it on the way.
Oh, thank you.
To mow and the belt slipped off my mower, so I got this much of my.
The other day.
It's a mess.
You guys weren't home.
Okay, okay, so. Counselor Evans would like her name plate to say Cindy Evans.
Let's head it to the dump because I remember you saying something about cardboard.
Is it C I N D Y or C Y? How does she want that spelled?
Cardboard if you wanted it.
Oh, man, I would have loved it. You should have just thrown it yard. I would have noticed eventually.
Mayor sheets? Mayor sheets?
Yes, ma'am.
How does she want that spelled? Cindy?
Weed barrier.
D Y.
C I N D Y? Okay, thank you.
The normal way.
Roll.
Sure.
Okay. I know, I know, right? Okay.
Yeah, I'm just so far behind on stuff, but yeah, just rack it up. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I can give her my packet.
If you don't mind parking with it.
No, I'm just making sure I've got everything. And then we have this one last thing.
There is one over by where Mark usually sits, I think. Unless Chuck Schultz took it, that's fine.
I brought part of it back and gave it to you, but no, it's okay. Just give her mine. I don't care. I just want to make sure I wasn't giving away my interview questions.
Oh, I know. We've got, we've got them everywhere. So. We're right now. We are on, we just finished up here, so now we're on the back.
I figured you wouldn't just bring me like tissue paper for weed barrier. I was thinking that you probably had a cup pre-cells up.
Okay, I'm gonna go over to the computer and do a little sneak peek here.
Oh, for the website.
So give me a moment here, guys.
See if I can get this to work. I don't know. Let's see. Pull out what I.
If I can.
See if I can get this to work. Well, wait, where do you go camping?
We've been. We've been. We've been to Southern Washington and Northern California.
Do you do a lot of Cascades stuff?
No. Not very big mountain roads, so.
Oh. I can understand this. I just happen to know where our city employee Mark's gonna be camping next week.
Where is that?
Uh.
Whoa, is that our new website?
This is a, this is a sneak peek. Okay, hold on.
It has our picture of our city council.
Doesn't have everybody.
No, I said something that was really cool before that.
Hold on.
All of us sitting around the table.
Okay. Can we see that? Okay?
Yep.
Okay, so this is a sneak peek. By no shape of the imagination, this is complete. As I, as I mentioned, we just finally got access to the current website. We're downloading everything. We're making a backup, so we have an exact copy, so we have something to refer back to in case we miss anything. So that's happening this week, but I wanted to share this. This is. I, I've been, I went in and I fiddled with the, let me see if I can find that temperature widget here real quick. Cause it was saying Celsius and it was driving me crazy. So I changed it to Fahrenheit. I think I broke it, so. About to have the web developer fix it. This is all Facebook content. Let me get up here. Yeah, this widget here, it was Celsius and I was just, no, 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 no. So.
It's not.
I know, and the time is off. Like I said, I broke it. So, you know, anyway. So that's, there's, there's all kinds of stuff here that. So the, the web developer, his name is Kirby, and so he's gonna be working with Don and I. We're gonna start diving into this and anything that needs to be updated or tweaked or whatever.
Well, this is on, on our, our same URL that was on before.
Mm-mm. Nope. This is MonroeOregon.gov. So we have a .gov.
What are we gonna do with the other one?
The, the other one. So the former city administrator has told us that he will be. He will stop hosting all the websites on InMotion. That's the posting company that he was using for our current city website. The end of August, he's pulling the plug. So.
Keep all the links and everything.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna have to, we'll work on the redirects and everything. So that's, that's another minor piece that we need to deal with, but yeah, so we'll, we'll get working on that too. Or just, we're trying to get everything off the other site. Take the opportunity to get it done.
The weather automatically updates in there.
It's supposed to, but I, I broke the widget, so.
Is it on weather bug?
I don't know what it's on.
Says right there.
Yeah, so anyway. We'll get that fixed. That's fine. Like I said, this is still.
He's worried about the weather.
Interested if it was inputted because I had the idea like burning.
Yeah.
Could that be on it? Can you, can you burn that day or not?
Wouldn't that be great?
Okay, let me see if I can find.
That'd be kinda nice. You go in there in the morning and go.
Did they take it back off? Is it back on burning?
There are, they're not populated yet. I wanted to.
I know, it wasn't enough.
And stuff's gonna grow now.
Yeah.
Yeah, like you need to worry about that.
Um, that would be good too. I mean, just like.
This is where you can do online bill pay.
Well, that's why.
We need right out from.
This is a form here you can fill out.
City easement street, but there's.
I have a city easement behind my property that I can't get to.
Doesn't happen very often, but yeah.
That comes into my property that isn't finished, so you can't drive through it. So I can't get to the back half where on the other side of the creek, it's never been mowed or anything. So we started trying to.
So yeah, we got. The city calendar, we'll have to pull. Don, I think you were telling me that our city calendar is actually on Google.
Yeah, we have a Google calendar that I maintain. It automatically pulls to our current website. That's something that we'll have to get.
Pull it over to this.
Kirby access to. And I will be putting in an announcement in this month's bills that we are switching to a new website. That way people know that they, they will need to trans, transition into this eventually.
I forgot to respond with my vote for the.
Oh, we'll talk about that later.
Um, you guys know, Google had a major data breach and you need to change all passwords.
Yeah. Oh, yes, I got one from Norton too. Yeah. Yeah. Um, let's see here, what else? We'll work on that. That's a little, a little difficult to see.
Yes, I better. I better figure that out.
Can find. Let's go back home here. One second. They're working on the speed too, so it'll, it'll run faster here eventually.
Save yourself. Just stay.
Government.
It's not the kind of entertainment you want.
Okay, so some of your mug shots are on here. Okay, just warning you.
Misinformation about what's happening and tag me.
Genie's not, Counselor Cuthbertson's not paying attention.
What? Where'd you get that picture?
It's always been on the website.
Oh, my gosh, are you serious?
So, so my, so my comment for anyone that doesn't like the picture is provide me with a new one and we'll have Kirby put it up.
You got mine, right?
I do. I have, we haven't done anything with yours.
You're fine.
So we'll need it. Cindy wants it.
Dan, you haven't aged a bit.
America's most wanted.
Yeah, anyway. So that's your sneak peek, okay? So it sounds like you guys are, you like it, so.
Yes.
Once we get it working and everything's populated.
Nice. I like the design and the format. I really like the font.
The revolving.
Font on the old one just drove me nuts.
Yeah, yeah, this is very easy to read quickly.
Looks professional and it seems like it's easy to navigate, or it will be.
One of the quick links we might want to add is permits.
Yeah.
In the city.
I think it goes under planning and building, isn't it?
Maybe, but I mean, not everything is a permit is planning or building.
Oh, ah, oh, yeah.
So like, so our former city administrator will update that.
Yeah.
So, but yeah, we have, we have planning documents here.
So this isn't live yet, right?
Yeah, are you thinking, you're thinking like renting MCC or the park or anything like that? Yeah.
Fireworks over here by the library, you know, I don't know if you guys know, but there's a fireworks.
Yeah. Yep, there is.
We approved that.
We approved it.
That kind of stuff, right? You know, that's not.
Yep.
Probably under planning or anything like that, so.
Yep.
I mean, I wouldn't look under planning for a permit to hold a party at the park or something.
Right.
Yeah, that would be definitely separate.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can definitely.
That's a good point, yeah.
Yeah. We can totally tweak it, so.
On the left side where you have all those links.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You should have a link for other quick links.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot, yeah. Yeah.
Put your volunteer forms on there.
Yeah, there's, there's lots of stuff. I'm not sure why we have the cart. It's kind of, you want to buy a Monroe, City Monroe T-shirt?
Maybe. Uh-oh.
Okay, that was Troy. Thank you, Troy.
He wants a T-shirt. He was so excited.
Links for the next two government agencies up in county and state.
Yeah, definitely. So, yeah. What I'll, what I'll. Yeah, what I can do is I can share this out and if you guys have feedback, we can give that to Kirby too.
It's gonna be a living document anywhere, right?
It totally will. We, absolutely. It just, it's exciting to have something new.
Yes.
I like the format and I like the ease of use. I think it seems a little bit more intuitive.
Yeah.
Public comment. We put public comment link on there too, right?
No.
Don't wreck it. Don't wreck it.
Wow.
Don't wreck it.
Yeah, anyway, so there you go. I just wanted to show it to you real quick. I can share the, the link out and if you would like to provide feedback and send it back to me, that's.
Be great.
Totally fine. So there you go. I'm gonna stop sharing. And okay, all right. Anyway, moving on, guys.
We should put that picture on there. I'm just saying.
Oh, bye.
Right here.
All right. We're gonna go ahead and keep moving on here, guys. We've got, let's see here, six dot two. Charter Spectrum Franchise Agreement, I mentioned earlier in the city report. So right now. Uh, we're just waiting for the spectrum side and their legal team. There's just like two minor updates. Uh, to the agreement and then I should have it back. And then that's when I'll share it with council so we can review and.
What is it for?
So Spectrum is providing, let's see, internet, phone, cell, cable service for Monroe. So they're just another.
Yeah.
Yep, yep, absolutely.
It's just, it's just another option besides Monroe telephone.
Yeah, yeah. And then with the franchise agreement, if we sign one with them, the city also gets a franchise. There's something they pay out. Yeah, subsidy that they pay the city as well. Yeah. Good question. Next up is the public works update. So Mr. Murray, like I mentioned, he is sick and at home and he needs to rest. And I don't want him coming back into work tomorrow making us all sick. So I asked him to not do that. We'll see what he does. Anyway, so he did want me before he left city hall last, earlier. Uh, he wanted to mention that dust control is gonna be happening in two weeks or less.
Okay.
So just keep that in mind. And then with Chuck Cross, so he's our other public works. We have Mark Murray is our public works lead and I'm Chuck Cross. He's our public works worker. Chuck was having some health issues. He actually has been cleared by his doctor now, so he's back full duty now. So they're gonna be shifting back to doing a meter installations again. So Mark wanted to make me to make sure that I mentioned those two things.
So for the dust control, where, where is the application gonna be? Like in the, in the park?
Oh, gosh, yeah, anything that's gravel.
What is it like ash?
So, Don, do you recall? It's, is it ash? Is it?
For, for what again?
For dust control.
Ooh, I don't know the areas. I just get the bills. I don't know.
That's totally fine.
When you go up. Night, but they do go up Mike Street at North.
You have to go up like pine all the way and then there's night that cuts back south. It's gravel.
Mm-hmm.
And then, um.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know if 11th or 12th, if they're.
I'm not sure if they go all the way. We would need Mark to answer the question for us.
And then actually the, where they're talking about putting in the, the lines that we're talking about, that's gravel too.
Oh, yeah, that's true. Yes. So, yeah. So they'll be going around and doing that, so be prepared.
Eleven behind where Chief Smith used to.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Uh, Don, did you want to provide an accounting and general administration update?
Um, other than, we're in the middle of utility billing. As far as the utility bill due date, I actually got about, well, sixty-four that counted for responses. There were a few one-offs. Um, there were a few people to put like the first or the fifth, which is just. I don't think that those would be dates that we could really work with based on what else I've received. Um, about thirty-six of those that I received were the twenty-second or twenty-third due date. The other twenty-eight were the fifteenth. Um, like I said, we did have a few that were just kind of random dates on there, but the people that did submit for the twenty-second and twenty-third made it, made it very clear that it would really affect their finances. To do it earlier in the month, so I think we're gonna move forward with the same bill date for now. Um, and I will be getting help next Monday, hopefully. Um, and so in the future, maybe it won't be as, as hectic during this time of the month.
It's been a one-person show in the office.
Yeah, it's just, it's too much for one person. Um.
Do you need help stuffing?
I. I printed bills today. Um, I probably will later tomorrow afternoon, but.
Okay.
Um, you've helped a lot in the past and, and the new person will be starting the thirtieth. Technically, I have to get him out by the end of the day on the thirtieth. So if you're not able to come in and assist, I will do what I can. I just, I also have my fiscal year in and my accounting piece is huge.
I'll be happy to come in and help you. That's just too much and it'd be better if it's just out of your hair.
Yeah, I do appreciate that. Yeah.
Oh, you can't. Oh, we have another volunteer, Dawn.
Okay.
So, uh.
You can come in the day after tomorrow.
Okay, that'd be perfect. Yeah, and there, there are several inserts that have to go in this month as well. I still need to create the, um. The monthly calendar with all of the announcements, so that would be perfect if you could. Yeah.
Great, thank you both.
Appreciate it.
Any other updates, Dawn?
Um, we did have the one payment plan agreement signed, um, that was paid today. Uh, for all bills for that account. Um, other than that, I don't believe so. And I will have to jump off now too. Are there any other questions that any council members or you have for me, Mayor?
I don't think so. I think we're okay. Go ahead and just have a good evening and we'll see you.
Thank you.
All right.
Good night.
Thank you.
I assume that payment plan was the one that's on my package.
Yes, and the only reason why it was in the packet was because earlier in the day, the individual in question hadn't paid it yet. So the individual has since paid it, so. So we don't have to worry about that now. Okay. Uh, let's see, six point five is Planning Commission update. Uh, the primary update is the, the Joint City Council Planning Commission meeting we have on Thursday. I'll be pulling together the agenda for that. And then, um, some of the information that we need to do comparisons. So what I'll do is get comparisons of tap fees and, and other fees from like Harrisburg and Philomos.
Are you gonna have the, um, lawyer's feedback for the moratorium on building?
Um. No, no, we won't be able to do that. So we're just, we're just talking about. Planning Commission really wants to talk about, um, fees right now, so. And they wanted us there, so, okay, that's fine. So if you can be there, that'd be great. Uh, did you, did you, uh, uh, Finance and Personnel Committee update? So Counselor Linder would typically give this, but she's getting married, so we're very excited about that. So, and I think I already mentioned with the city administrator hiring update, we do have round two is tomorrow. We have two very good candidates. Both are experienced. It's going to be interesting. We did actually supply them before the weekend with a supplemental question that we asked them to answer. And I believe they've both answered it and returned it already, so, um, we have that and then a series of questions for them. And then, uh, we'll go from there on a decision. Uh, when we already talked about, and there's something with the city administrative assistant that I want, that information I wanted to provide, which. Wondering if it ended up, there's so much paper.
Page.
This one, this one. So this, this loan page here, page forty one, it's from the, uh, the city, um, employee handbook. And specifically, I'm looking at section P, hiring a family members. So the, the city administrative assistant that we hired, she is actually the spouse of our public works worker. She has a lot of experience. She was actually working for the city of Eugene and their water department, their water billing department, I should say. So looking at this and I wanted to bring, I wanted to show this to council to ensh- to ensure that, you know, we're not violating policy here. As long as, and this was Counselor Linder and I, we talked about this as well. We're not violating policy as long as people are not reporting to one another. We're good. So this is not a situation where, um, Chuck Cross, he's in public works. And then Shanann Cross, she is in general administration. It actually is two different departments. They do not.
There is a lot of overlap though with like.
There is.
Professional, but I think if she's got the experience, that's what we need right now.
And we, we as, just to give you a little bit of background, um, we have struggled with trying to find somebody. We had a great candidate, went ahead and made an offer to her and then, uh, she went ahead and sent me an email seven hours before her first day. To tell me she couldn't do it. So then we had to scramble back and Dawn found another really great candidate in the pool that we had. We interviewed that individual quickly, very quickly. And we, this was like on a Friday and I asked on call references and if it looks good. Monday, let's pull the trigger and that's, she went ahead and called and this lady had already gotten a job with Lane County. So we're like, okay, this is not boding well for us. So then we got, um, Shanann's resume and we looked at that and we interviewed her, so. So I just wanted to make sure to be transparent that, that where, but who we hired.
Not as bad as we had a counselor and a mayor that were married to each other and there was questions there.
I remember you. I know. So, okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was communicated with everyone. Uh, let's see, let's do the proclamation while I'm thinking about it. So it is very in the middle of our packet here. Let's see if I can find it easily. I thought, but I, you know, I should have, I should have just pulled it out.
Which isn't really that. You have seventy seven pages.
I know, right?
It is.
Is it after the resolutions?
Not, yeah.
Okay, no, I got it. I got it. I got it. I'm close. I know I'm close.
Right after the flag one.
Yep, there we go. Okay, okay. I'm gonna go ahead and read it. I'm tired, so I apologize if I, but I'm gonna read it. So this is our Inde- Independence Day proclamation, and this has been on my mind with recent events, so. Whereas two hundred and forty nine years ago, a group of visionaries, our founding fathers. Set out and established a new and independent nation unlike any other, based on the philosophies of a representative democracy. To affirm and safeguard each citizen's personal right to pursue their own destiny and purpose. And whereas the signing of the Declaration of Independence on July fourth seventeen seventy six. By the Second, uh, Continental Congress secured and permanently enshrined the principles of the United States of America. And provided a framework for a balanced and accountable government and society that prioritized that freedom. And well being of ci- citizens racing, not only from outside forces, but also from their own governing bodies. And whereas our nation's founders demonstrated their love for liberty and proved their devotion. When they risked their lives to secure the freedoms underscored in the Declaration of Independence. And the safeguards that would be detailed in the Constitution and throughout our history. Americans have remained unwavering in their efforts to build and preserve a country of liberty and justice for all. And whereas the bravery and sacrifice of United States Air Force service members. Has carried forward the principles established by our founding fathers and has afforded us continued freedom and peace. And we recognize the service of our veterans, active duty service members, reservists, National Guard members and their families. And whereas this Fourth of July, as we commemorate the signing of our nation's Declaration of Independence. And celebrate our exceptional liberties, let us reflect on the significance and true cost of peace. As we honor and thank the heroes who have made the ultimate sacrifice to preserve our freedom. And now we're, and now therefore the mayor and Monroe City Council do hereby proclaim. July fourth, twenty twenty five as Independence Day. In the city of Monroe, to acknowledge and celebrate the birth of our great nation and honor those who have defended and continue to defend our state and our country. There you go. So what do we have for the evening here, guys? Oh, we're, we're down to the end here almost. Um, I've got section seven is our city events on the ca- on the agenda here. Uh, we've got our, the Blackberry Jam. I have a date for it now, so it's August thirtieth. Oh, hopefully I'll have a time here next month. Uh, we've got the First Responders Appreciation Day and the Monroe October Festival are on the same day, which is October fourth. And let me know if there's any other events that I'm not aware of. I know, oh, I know Christmas, Christmas in July is not on here.
Is the October festival, is that the one where they're gonna close off this street here?
So the October festival is gonna actually be on private property on the other side of Highway ninety nine. Yeah, we actually.
And we're still using the park, right?
Uh, I don't know if we're gonna use the park at this point. Uh, we're using property that's behind Benny's and the bank and, uh.
Lift station.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And then, uh, Brady Croson is gonna be using her property as well for the, the festival, so. It's all gonna be on private property, so we just have to make sure with the lift station, we don't block it.
Right.
So that emergency, you know, if we have an emergency, we gotta be able to get in there, so. But yeah, definitely let me know if there's any other events we need to add on there.
The Monroe Festival, the same as it used to be on Sixth Street?
Mm hmm. Yeah, it's just, it's gonna get, it's, it's just gonna move, it's gonna move a couple of blocks. Uh, other than that, um. We've got other business, that's just committee reports. Commissioner Myers will shoot me on the first one, but economic development.
Who's the, uh, chairperson of that? Am I?
That would be me.
Okay, cause I was wondering, who's left, right?
It would be, I think it's you, me, Stan Solot and then Nick Rich. And then I think Eliza Mason is on there and I'm, I know I'm missing like, I think David Mills and then, um.
I haven't seen anybody but Stan.
And Todd Nystrom, yeah. I know. Well, you know, maybe one of our, our candidates for city administrator might be able to. Get this committee moving. We'll have to see. Uh, Finance and Personnel Counselor Linder, as I've already mentioned, she's out, but. My guess is we're gonna probably meet in July for a variety of things, probably city administrator follow up. Um, I know we've talked about with Mark Murray, he has not had an annual review. He has not had an actual, and he's been with the city for.
Wow.
Four and a half, almost four and a half years now. So Counselor Linder and I, we've already talked with him and we're going to do a performance review on him. Also, he has expressed that, um, he would like to talk to us about the city potentially offering additional benefits. Uh, and the reason for that is he would like to get out of the Navy Reserves. And so he wants to have a conversation around that. Um, there's a cost factor with that, so we'll have to see how that goes. But, uh, I'm, I'm totally fine with whatever anybody wants to talk about. We'll talk about it and we'll figure out how we can do it, so. Yeah, absolutely. Um, ordinance. I don't know when we're gonna have that next, uh, parks. We need to, we need to get with, well, we need, do we need to get with Mark? I think, or do we need Mark for it?
Um, it would be good if Mark was there. Um, and then we also need to do public works, but I've been just holding off because we're so, Chuck's been so busy and.
Right. I think if we get past July the fourth.
That's what I'm thinking and also it, I hate to have one without, it'd be nice if we had our new city administrator on.
Yeah, no.
To be honest.
Yeah.
So it's like, I don't wanna have to keep starting over and starting over and starting over.
Hundred percent agree with you. That's fine. Library negotiation, that's an ad hoc committee. It'll be bye bye.
I think we're gone.
Anyway, it's gone.
Yeah.
I'll volunteer for that one.
Whatever. So our next city, uh, council work session is July fourteenth. And our next planning commission, regular planning commission meeting is July first. We're down to counselor comments. You guys have any comments? I talk all the time.
You guys can talk too.
I did talk, um, a little bit with, uh, Michelle Eldridge about, um, our parks master plan and how difficult it was going to be. Cause I was led to believe that it was gonna be really difficult and we didn't have enough information. It's not that difficult and she also has some resources to be able to help us put it together. So we'll be able to start working on that right away, which I had hoped that we could do, so.
Excellent.
I know, made me super happy. I was like, yeah, that's what I thought.
Any other counselors have comments?
I don't have a comment, but I have a question. So on this round two for city administrator, do you want me in on these or no? Cause I, I. Yes. So you want me to, okay.
Yes, I absolutely positively. I think the more counselors.
And then when would you like to reconvene and, and, uh?
So I'm letting Counselor Linder handle all of that. She is getting married, but she is on a mission. I'm telling you. She wants to get this done.
She wants to handle.
She's been handling the whole city ministry piece.
I know, I know.
Yeah, and she's doing an awesome job.
She is, absolutely.
Yeah, so I think, um, once we have them and she'll be there, we can ask her what she would like to do. So yeah, good question. Anybody else have a question? Um, comment? We can talk after too.
So she needs to know what committee she wants to be on.
Okay, well, we should probably talk about what committees there are. So I think Counselor Ray, you're on, are you on public works? You're on budget.
And public work.
And public work.
Okay. Counselor Williams, you're on finance and personnel. Are you on anything else? I think you're on economic development too. I try to remember. I think she's the other, the other.
All right, maybe one time.
And then Counselor Cuthbertson, she's on public works and parks. I'm on all of them. Uh, Counselor Myers.
I think I'm just on econ as far as I know.
Oh, we need to suck you into something else.
Yeah. Library.
Library.
I was on that one.
That's right. I, yeah, anyway.
There's more room at the end.
Right, and Counselor Linder is finance personnel.
And she was on the library.
She was on library too.
But that one as well, yeah.
So I mean, there's, you don't have to make a decision right now. Think about it. And we can talk. And you're gonna be, you're gonna come to City Hall a couple days?
Uh, like Wednesday, yeah.
Okay, yeah, yeah. We can coordinate. They can come down when you're there. We can chat. But yeah, definitely, we can talk. And then all these folks here, they like talking too.
And then we have, do we have the joint session on Thursday? Okay, yes. Is it six?
It's at six.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I'll be here.
It'll be here, yeah. We have, we have all the meetings here.
Are we gonna have to rearrange the tables?
Oh, probably. That's half the fun.
And the joint session was at six?
It's at six, yes. And it'll be Planning Commission and it'll be City Council, so. Uh, anybody else have any comments?
Can we bring food? Can I bring food? Cause I'm gonna. I'll make curries or spring food.
Bring food, it's fine.
Uh, yeah, I like to bake.
I bake myself.
Do you have any, any requests?
No, I want you there. I just surprised you. Surprised me with.
I work in chocolate. Do you like chocolate? Cause I.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay. Okay, yeah, I won't bring anything without, well, maybe flour and dairy, but I will do no nuts.
There. All right, uh, the next section was Mayor's comments. I've already talked more than.
Okay, can we?
We can totally adjourn. Thank you all so much for your time. Yep, Genie.
Genie. Oh, man. How did we get out to eight forty five?
Yeah.
That might be helpful to you.
Yeah, probably, yes.
I did not sign these in here. They're the release ones.
Oh, I signed those. Okay, there's.
But I wanted to make sure.
There's probably stuff in here that I need to have you sign. Okay.
Sure. Does it do its own cooldown? What about the laptop? Just want it locked? Control, delete? Oh, that's what I am. I'm an alternative signer. Yeah.